All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Special Board of Education Meeting for February ninth, two thousand twenty-one. Ms. Camp House, please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood.
Present.
Mrs. Cole.
Present.
Ms. Ballard.
Present.
Mrs. Raiber.
President.
Mrs. Rarica.
President.
All right, everyone, please join in saying of the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so as I just mentioned right before we went live, this is normally our committee meeting, and tonight, because we've announced a special board meeting to take care of some official business, this is going to be a little bit of a hybrid meeting. So most of the items, except for a couple of resolutions, are just going to be for discussion. We will be voting on a couple of things. Normally, we will adopt the agenda, and I don't see it on the the schedule, but I would like to make a motion that we go ahead and approve the agenda as written.
I'll second.
The only reason why I'm doing this is because this is a special board meeting, and we do have two resolutions on the docket. Any discussion? Camp House, please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
Yes.
Ms. Ballard.
Yeah.
Mrs. Raiber.
Yeah.
Mrs. Rarica.
Yes.
All right, with that, the agenda has been formally approved, and so now we'll move on to item number three in our agenda, which is our only discussion item this month, and that's a Norwood View update with Principal Lynn Yates.
And I know Mr. Yates was on here just a moment ago, anxious to share everything.
Yeah, am I am I on here?
Yes, we can hear you, Lynn. Welcome.
Okay, thank you. It's great to be here. As you know, I like to talk about Norwood View, and so this is a great opportunity, and I appreciate it. I'd like to start off by talking about our current enrollment. We have two hundred and seventy-seven students attending in person, sixty-four getting instruction on the virtual program, for a total of three hundred and forty-one, which is about where we ended last year, actually. Some good news is that our numbers are actually increasing. We've had eight new students from move in through the district in the last two weeks, actually. So that's good news. Well, as you know, this year began with our transition to the middle school, and I do believe that the transition's gone very well. I think most of our families, I hope, and our staff, everyone would agree with that. You know, the transition team was formed early last year in the nineteen-twenty school year, and it was a good thing because come spring and summer, we kind of had a little diversion there, and our focus was put primarily on COVID. It's proof that you can never start planning too soon. It's great foresight from Ms. Ronan to get the ball rolling early, so we were prepared. The drop-off and pickup videos were very helpful for our parents and staff. Those procedures were up and running in just a couple of days, and transitions throughout the school day have been smooth and efficient, with practically no elementary interaction with middle school students or staff. It's instrumental with the initial planning and the implementation of our transition. And the middle school and high school staff have been very welcoming and supportive of school of our school throughout the year, our students especially. So it's been a great move. We've very much enjoyed this year. Hopefully, this can assist with the transition for Williams next year, you know, when they come to middle schools. Hopefully, we've got some things ironed out for them. As far as the school environment is concerned, I don't want to jinx ourselves here, but discipline incidents have been almost nonexistent. Now, obviously, the smaller class sizes contribute to that, but I just commend our students, that the students that are coming to school are just focused, they're focused on their schoolwork, they're getting a job done, and we just couldn't be more proud of them. We also continue to implement our Positive Behavior Intervention Support Plan, we call Give Peace a Chance, as well as our PACS Behavior Game Strategies and Activities that we use in the classrooms. Each day, we start by reciting our Pledge of Allegiance, and we review expectations and procedures for that day. Several of our aides recently received PACS training in January, thanks to Chris, and that's been a great asset, because now our entire staff is able to implement the PACS program in all areas throughout the school. Of course, our greatest asset with our program is that it establishes common procedures and expectations, most importantly, a common language for the entire school. Our adoptive class is up and running again, although our numbers are down considerably from last year, and it's primarily due to COVID. Our program currently consists of our some of our longtime partners Paycor, Gilman Partners, Merrill Lynch, and Triversity. These committed organizations are supporting seven classrooms this year. And while the number of partners is down, it certainly is a great asset to the View, and we look forward to getting back to normal soon and building our program back up. These adopters lead monthly virtual meetings, primarily focusing on the social and emotional needs of students. These meetings also include educational activities, communicating with pen pals, virtual field trips, but most importantly, the interpersonal interactions between the students and our partners. They're enjoyed so much by our students that some of the teachers are using the Adopt a Class virtual meetings to encourage student participation during their Wednesday Google meets. The View currently has fifty-six students participating in the Avenue for Success Program, meeting four days a week. These exciting clubs include Virtual Homework, Art Academy, Drama Kinetics, Bicoda Drums, and School Aid. Of course, our primary focus as a school is academics. We continue to run our teacher-based team meetings bi-weekly. Julie Sciarlato, Hamilton County Educational Service Instructional Coach, provides valuable expertise as we focus on standards, student assessments, realigned intervention grouping, coaching, instruction, data analysis, and collaboration. These meetings truly do drive our instructional process. While we are enjoying our time at the middle school, we're really looking forward to returning home this summer. I toured the View last week, met with Ben Gunther of Grayback Construction, just to catch up on some of the renovation progress that's taking place. As you know, our stat parking lot has been expanded, and I will tell you that nine years ago, when I came to the View, the first thing I heard was, why can't we use this grassy area for parking so we don't have to park on the street? Well, I assure you, our entire staff is very appreciative to the school board for listening and acting on their concerns. These additional spaces will provide both safety and convenience for our staff members and parents. The driveway to Drex from Drex to our cafeteria has been updated. We have a new dumpster space. It's already been constructed, and this will be a great asset as it replaces the dozen or so trash cans that used to line the drive from Drex to our cafeteria. So this results in a neat, clean appearance and a better, you know, more sanitary environment. Well, our parents are going to be very excited to use the new steps and sidewalk connecting Drex Avenue to the side lawn. For years, students, parents, and staff members are forced to climb up the grassy hill or walk all the way around to the from Drex Avenue. Once again, this will result in convenience as well as safety for everyone. The auditorium looks great with newly plastered walls, a fresh coat of paint, not to mention the soon-to-be-installed state-of-the-art sound system. We're really looking forward to hosting school and community events in our beautifully updated auditorium, especially our Veterans Day program. The office is coming along also. The inside walls are framed, just giving us a visual of what is to come. For me personally, and probably a lot of other people, the new windows, the new HVAC system, all the structural and cosmetic updates that are going on, they're going to be amazing. But a safe, spacious, brand-spanking-new office is truly a great addition to our school. You know, the office is literally the doorway to our beautifully renovated school, and it's also the visitor's first impression. This will certainly be something that we, as a school and entire community, will be really proud of for years to come. Well, it's hard to believe that we will be moving back to our newly renovated home in just a few short months, but for now, our focus is solely on providing for our students the needed social, emotional, and academic support that they deserve and need. And we look forward to finishing strong this most unusual year. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Yates. Does anyone have any questions for him about his presentation?
I was wondering, what's the update on the drop-off zone for View?
The drop-off zone right now consists of, I'll try to describe it to you. I know you guys are familiar with it, but the, you know, with the addition with the the addition for the parking space, it's already been poured. There'll be one more layer of asphalt, and then it'll be completed, and it'll be painted, you know, probably in the spring. But you know that area extends up to the playground now, behind the backstop. So you know, there was a gate, the that we opened every morning for the students. It was kind of behind the backstop. It was it's a large gate that we could pull cars and trucks if we needed it and off the playground. That will be an entrance for a drop-off in the morning. They will come through that gate. They will pass through the parking lot and drop off students, enter back or exit back onto Hannaford at where our current enter-exit area is, and then turn right and proceed to the the stoplight. So that is the that's where we're at right now with the drop-off and pickup area.
I'm really excited about that for our parents, most of all, just to have a safe drop-off there, and I hope that we can get you a video, just like we did at the middle school sometime summer, to put out for our families.
Absolutely. Yeah, that's 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 very good. Yeah.
Does anyone else have any questions for for Mr. Yates? I do have one question myself. So a couple of years ago, when we made the decision to start transitioning specifically the sixth grade back up to the middle school, there was a lot of lively discussion about whether or not that was the right move at the time. Not knowing at that time, we were having that discussion, that, you know, in a year and a half later, we would be putting an entire elementary into the middle school, not not just sixth grade. And so I'm wondering if you could just spend a couple of minutes and just speak about your experience with not only sixth graders in the middle school, but, you know, all the way down to kindergartners in that building, living and working and interacting with the older kids.
Um, well, my my previous school, as as Mary knows, was a Norwood View, Riverview East, I'm sorry, and we were a pre-K to twelve building. So we just had, you know, we had preschoolers walking by, seniors, and they would high-five, and there was never an incident in it. Matter of fact, I really enjoyed that, the diversity that we had in the school. So I was, you know, me personally, I had no concerns at all about it, and we have gone, I think, above and beyond with the help of, again, of the middle school staff and administration to, you know, what we designed was literally to and I I guess I personally wish that we could have had more interaction. You know, I would have loved for eighth graders to come down and read to read to our kindergartners. You know, that's just me personally, but I know that our goal was to make everyone comfortable, and I hope that we've been able to do that. I think we have. So, you know, I would just, again, you know, we, like in our school, our sixth-grade students always go down and read to our our first grade, you know, we have our reading buddies. And so I there was there was no concerns from from the parents. We never got, we so far, we've never received one concern or complaint or anything about a concern for the safety of their kindergarten students or sixth-grade students. So I think it's been very successful. And like I said, I, you know, I don't know that Williams could do it, but I think it would be nice to have a little more interaction than and we intentionally avoided that this year, you know.
Well, yeah, we've avoided a lot of things this year, so. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Yates?
I was gonna say, I was looking forward to interaction, too, but I wasn't there for the vote, you know, when you guys decided to move them over. But, um, hopefully, if COVID permits, then we'll be able to have more interaction, because also COVID prevented interaction between students.
Yep, you are correct, Alice. And I hope we can try and do a little bit more interaction as well as the situation allows next year. I think it'd just be healthy for the kids to have that. Mr. Yates, I want to thank you for your time. Yes, sir?
Yeah, I think I think the families would be open to that, because I just think it's been such a successful year this year with us, with everyone working together. I think maybe that would be a good opening for for us to, you know, I mean, it's a great advantage to be able to do that and, you know, give our older kids some responsibility to come down and work with the smaller kids or vice versa.
Yeah. Well, thank you for the presentation. Thank you for your time. We greatly appreciate all the hard work that you do.
Well, thank you, and I I appreciate, you know, like, again, all the support that you guys give us. It's very much appreciated, and our entire staff appreciates it also. So thanks for letting me present.
Thank you. We're going to move on to item number four in our agenda, which is the Education Committee, and I'll hand this over to Board Member Mrs. Raiber.
Yeah. So first, a couple of items that we have here. Item one is dates for parent teacher conferences for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year for the middle school and the high school. So those are September twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, October fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, February third, twenty twenty-two, then March third, twenty twenty-two. And then item two is for the elementary schools. So that's November first and fourth of twenty twenty-one, and then February seventh and tenth of twenty twenty-two. I don't know if anybody has any discussion about any of that, but.
Yeah, those are far in in the future. I don't even know if it's even worth discussing those dates.
Right. I agree. So item three is a resolution, though, to amend the back-to-school plan that we approved last summer. Essentially, this resolution is kind of suspending the the plan that we put into place that is based on the color-coded system to allow us to hopefully start as full-time, five-day-a-week back-to-school for the second, for the fourth quarter, starting March twenty-second. That allows all of our staff to get their second dose of the vaccine and a two-week kind of grace period for that to kick in for full effectiveness. So that resolution would kind of put that plan into place.
I don't know. I would like to have Superintendent Ronan, kind of who participates in the DART team, to kind of just give an update on what was discussed in the last DART meeting and how this resolution came about.
Exactly. You know, right now, things are different than they were seven months ago, when last July, we approved both of these resolutions, and we have been off our plan for quite some time, because I think most school districts in Ohio realized as the year went on, tying it to the color-coded system. We were greatly impacted by hospital beds and ICU unit issues. So like many, many of the districts in the state of Ohio, we have moved away from that. We are so excited that also with the governor wanting schools to reopen and providing vaccine for our staff members, we were very happy that eighty-eight percent of our teachers and eighty-four percent of our classified staff have been vaccinated with their first shot. The second shot is due on March third. We had several teachers who wanted to get the vaccine, but because they were in quarantine or because they're pregnant right now, want to wait a little bit. So I know our numbers are even going to go up. So I think we're on very firm footing to return full-time as the directives that are actually the directions the governor has given, and our parents, I think we've all heard from our parents who and want our children back full-time. The teachers want the children back. We know that academically, the test scores and attendance are not where they should be, and it's been a very difficult year for everyone. So we are hoping at the beginning of fourth quarter, we can make this possible. Of course, we will still continue. I want to be clear, all the mask-wearing, the sanitizing, the electrostatic cleaning, desk shield, social distancing, all of that will continue. And our DART team and the Norwood Health Department, and also Hamilton County Department of Health, will, we actually monitor weekly the positivity rate, the reproductive rate, plus what's happening with our students. And last week, we did not have any positive students or staff. Actually, we've had really more staff members than students positive, and most of that has been from outside activities, community spread, not school spread. So we will continue to look at the NORZIP codes, what's happening in our schools on a weekly basis, to ensure once we come back full-time, we have a handle on what is happening. And of course, if something were to happen or new directives come out of the Ohio Department of Health, we will immediately adjust to that. But we will, we're all very excited about welcoming the children back full-time on March twenty-second, which is the first day of fourth quarter. I did want to mention to the board, and if you were in agreement, since our staff is receiving their second dose of vaccine on Wednesday, March fourth, because that's the day that the Norwood Health Department, who have been wonderful partners, are giving it, because they do senior citizen clinics on Tuesdays and Thursdays. So Wednesday is a day that they have that they can actually come to the school and administer the vaccine. That's on March third. On March fourth, I would would like to recommend a virtual day, just because I know a lot of our staff members will be under the weather. I know in hospitals, they staggered the vaccine, so everyone didn't get it the same day, because they knew that there would be staff members who maybe had Jules Fever, headache, body aches, or whatever. And we have seen a bit of that after the first shot, and we understand that that will increase after the second. So we'd like to, on Thursday, March fourth, have a virtual day and let the parents know. So at this point, I think that concludes everything that is in the resolution. And again, I know everyone is very happy that we will be able to welcome the students back in just a few more weeks. So thank you, President Atwood.
You're welcome. So with that, I would like to make a motion that we adopt this resolution to suspend the previous back-to-school planned resolutions and put this in its place.
A second.
A second.
Right. Any discussion on this resolution?
So I was getting a little broken feed, so I just want to reiterate, we had eighty-eight percent, if I'm if I heard correctly, eighty-eight percent of our teachers already had their first vaccine and will receive the second vaccine on the third, and then some more will follow, you know, as they're available to go over to the department, with those that I heard correctly.
Yes.
You're correct.
Okay, thank you.
I think we also want to mention that if your child's on virtual and you can stay on virtual, please do, because that helps us keep more room in our classrooms for the full force of kids coming back. If everyone came back from virtual, too, it would it would not be good, because also we have teachers who are designated to virtual and like my own children are virtual, so they will stay virtual.
My understanding is that they were signed up for the virtual that's still the plan? Yes.
Right, but some people do get confused, and they think, oh, we're going back five day. My kid needs to go back to school, and that's not the case. It would really help us out if they don't, but they can. It'd be better if they don't.
All right. Any other discussion? Mrs. Camp House, please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood.
Yes.
Ms. Ballard.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
Yes.
Mrs. Raiber.
Yeah.
Mrs. Rarica.
Yes.
All right, with that, all passing yes, we have amended our back-to-school plans as part of the way from the previous resolutions, and we're going to go back to school five days a week for those who are in person on March twenty-second. All right, Mrs. Raiber?
All right. So our next item, I'm sorry, let me pull it up here, is another resolution recommending the denial of parole for Gordon Franklin. So this would just be kind of an official statement from the board to be sent to the parole board, you know, reiterating that we think that he should be denied parole. Brandon, I don't know if you want to speak more to that.
I can, or somebody else wants to.
I I can.
Yeah, go ahead.
I actually used to work with Gordon Franklin at Walgreens. He was an employee when I was in at the Walgreens. We were all so devastated when we got this news, not only because of the nature of crime, but just the fact that it
Yeah, it was.
It was new, and we couldn't protect her. And we have kept her memory alive. The community has done an amazing job, and it would be a complete disservice to their work and to her life if we didn't say something to the board to try to keep this person in prison. He does not deserve to be out. I think this is a very strong position for us to be in to to say, hey, no, Norwood supports this child and the family and the people that she left behind in her memory, and we will honor her first, because that's what Norwood does. I'll proudly sign this.
So with that, I would like to make a motion that we adopt the resolution recommending denial of parole for Gordon Franklin.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Camp House, please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood.
Yes.
Ms. Ballard.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
Yes.
Mrs. Raiber.
Yes.
Mrs. Rarica.
Yes.
With that, that resolution passes as well, and we'll get this executed and sent out to the parole board. All right, we're going to move on to item number five in our agenda, which is Personnel Recommendations, and I'd like to turn it over to Superintendent Ronan.
Thank you, President Atwood. I just have one recommendation tonight, to hire Tanya Woodruff as a student assistant for a student at Bobby Fairfax School. Now, I do have some additional pupil activity contracts, and I'm going to ask our A.D., Alex Hines, to go over the coaches we are hiring.
Thank you. First one will be Maddie Baker for Boys Varsity Track. She is a recent graduate Athlete of the Year at Norwood, and I think she'll be an outstanding track coach for us. Next is Hannah Reinhardt for Girls Varsity Track Assistance. She is returning from last year. Next is Hannah Reinhardt for Girls Varsity Track Assistant. She is returning from last year. And the last is Carmen Oble and she, uh, is going for Boys Varsity Track Assistant. She is, uh, originally from New York State. She was a, uh, uh, a state champion in track. She attended Xavier. She ran track there and she's also a UC police officer. And that's all that I have.
That concludes the superintendent's recommendations.
All right. Thank you. Committee reports for this month. Uh, we're going to move down to the finance committee and I'll turn this over to Mrs. Camp House.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm happy to say that the sale of our bonds to fund the remaining construction project has gone very well. Norwood City Schools sold $7.5 million of tax-exempt bonds this morning in a very competitive bond market. The companies that purchased our bonds were good quality investors and they appreciated Norwood City Schools' good name. There were only three tax-exempt bond issues available for sale today in Ohio. And as you can imagine, the demand is greater than that. So I am happy to report that our interest rate over the 20-year life of the bonds is just 1.81%. Isn't that fantastic? We are grateful to be able to provide updated air conditioning buildings with greater handicap accessibility, safer drop-off lanes and more secure entrances for our students. Plus we did so staying well within budget and an extremely low borrowing interest rates. So we are finalizing all that bond, um, paperwork today and tomorrow and we'll receive funding for that very soon. My CFO report is attached for your review and approval, um, next week. You will notice along with my regular financial information, I have included a student enrollment study that details our student counts comparing our current year totals to five years ago. I will be discussing this with finance committee next week and can provide more information if you would like it after reviewing the document. While revenues have been slow July year-to-date, I am still expecting to somewhat exceed our estimated revenues compared to the November forecast. We are seeing savings on the budget side also in purchase services, but that might change as we finalize our federal pandemic budgets. All change order listings are attached for your approval also. 6.02 on the agenda appropriation resolution to approve our current budget. 6.03 Ohio Coalition for Equity and Adequacy of School Funding. We recommend the board join Ohio E and A as they fight to stop the Ed Choice voucher expansion. 6.04 North Norwood Lease. This is a two-year lease for Hamilton County ESC. So they can continue renting the North Norwood Elementary Building. 6.05 Normal High School Commissioning Proposal. Because the HVAC system at the high school is more complicated than our other building systems. Our architect is recommending that we contract with ZHCX to provide further services. This company will work during and after our remodeling project at the high school to make sure we see further efficiency and value for our HVAC system. 6.06 Certificate of Substantial Completion, Sharpsburg Parking Lot. This agreement marks the beginning of our warranty period and states that we are mostly complete with that parking lot project. 6.07 Certificate of Substantial Conclusion, Completion for Sharpsburg Elevator. Again, we are mostly complete with the elevator project and our warranty period is beginning. 6.08, the final financial item, notice to bid for the high school phase two. We will advertise to bid the high school phase two renovation project and will collect bids on March 11. The first advertisement will be in the Inquirer and the second will be on our webpage at Norwood Schools dot org. That is all I have for finance.
I do have a question about, uh, 6.07. It's my understanding that our elevator doesn't go to all of the floors, leaving second and third grades unaccessible. So for the equity of that building, um, are we going to be moving an entire grade? Should we have a student that needs that service? If we have students with a broken leg, teachers who might need an elevator for whatever reason. Is it possible to look at a type of MOU for one of the smaller closet-sized elevators? Or something that would only operate on a second, on the second side of that building? It's also my understanding that it can't get down to the gym. So again, if we have a student in need, the accessibility is extremely limited, um, for Sharpsburg. So I didn't exactly get to see the blueprints for where this elevator was going, but in, in my head, an elevator is supposed to take you to all the floors in the building. So if we can't do that. And I think we're going to run into the same issue with, um, with Williams being that it's a split level, that we're going to have some, some issues with the elevator services there. Is this something that we can fix the accessibility issues?
Well, I would just like to say at the beginning of the project, this was not included at all. There were no elevators planned. And so we have added these elevators as we've seen savings in the project. It was our first priority. But when you have a building as old as our building, the floors do not match up for any additions. And that's why there are some accessibility issues. We will still be just so much more accessible than we were before the project started. But of course, we do have plans. It's much easier to move a teacher and a classroom than it is. If, if we have to, we can certainly do that. And I know Mrs. Ronan has other plans that she can mention tonight also.
Okay. Yeah. Cause if, if you have an entire level that's not accessible, or in William's case where the building is split. You know, you can't necessarily move an entire grade level to accommodate the needs of a, of a single student. Or if you have a student that's injured, that could be temporary need. It's still something to consider. If we're upgrading our buildings and we need to be ADA compliant, then it needs to be ADA compliant, no matter what grade that student is in.
We, we, because of the age of our buildings, we do, we're not, we are not forced to be ADA compliant. This is something that we voluntarily took on to make better for our students. But we knew it was not going to be perfect from.
It doesn't make it equitable for our students though. So from, from my perspective, if we are putting in the effort to make it accessible, then it needs to be accessible. Not part of the way accessible or only a couple of floors are accessible. To me, if a child can't get to gym and can't get to third grade, that's not accessible. So I want to take a serious look at William's plan to see if there's a way that we can do a split small elevator, closet-sized elevator, similar to like the size of the middle school. I know it's not ideal, but it's handy if you do have one person, you know, like I said, if they're injured. Some people can end up in cast for months and they can't go up and downstairs. We can't move an entire classroom to accommodate, you know, somebody who might need to be on crutches for a month or two. But this is something I want to look at for William seriously. Because equity is kind of something that I'm big with and I work with the ADA a lot with the deaf community. And sometimes I am told, well, it's, it's good enough and until it isn't. And if we have the opportunity to make something better for our students, I think we need to look at that honestly and see what we can do to make it equitable for all of our students, regardless of their accessibility. And whether or not it's required is, is a moot point. It's not that we're forced to do it. It's that it's the right thing to do, which we should do it. And I don't know if the board will stand with me on that. I know that there's cost involved with elevator services, but to me, accessibility is key. If a kid can't get to the entire grade level that their classrooms are on, that's a problem.
I believe our architect had suggested, but we would have to do addition, I think in addition to the building, which then prevents the driveway from coming through. So I think the architects really have tried to come up with something, but short of tearing down a wing to make it the same level. It has been very tricky. So I don't, I don't think the architects were trying not to, um, be equitable. I think they just know that it's a difficult situation in old buildings with the levels don't match. And in fact, you know, the Sharpsburg elevator, the school opened in August and we're just approving it tonight because we had to dig out the pit. So they've all been incredibly problematic. Same thing there where the floors didn't quite match. So I think the architects truly are trying, but well, I'm more than glad to go back again and try to see what we could come up with. The other trade-off too, is you do sacrifice a classroom for an elevator and some of our buildings are small. That there's also the space issue. What do you want to give up? To put an elevator in. So I know they had looked at that and I think had talked to the principal about, well, we could take it, you know, we'll take a classroom. So we'll be glad to take another look. It's just, it isn't perfect and it's a struggle with, again, it's a struggle with these old buildings, trying to make it work. And I think the elevator at Williams, you're right, they're putting it in, um, with the, right behind the board office, they're trying to put it in there like in that closet. Take that away and in the hallway to try to put it on that side of the building. But you're correct, the third floor on the other wing, there's no way to reach it because of the way the building's designed or has been added on to over the years.
In, in that horseshoe and put it on the outside of the building?
I, I can certainly suggest that. I, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
I think the problem would be that because the floors are off, not like, like quarter floors, right? It's not like a, a full floor or even a half floor or off quarter. It's, it's, I, I don't, I think it's impossible to program an elevator stop at a quarter floor. And I think that's, that's the challenge.
Uh, we had that at Cincinnati State because when you would walk in the main entrance, there was just a short, like five step up to the very first level. It was like the student store. You go up about five or six steps and that was the first level. The elevator would go up to that half floor and then it would put on up.
Yeah.
So it would go from that lowest floor up five stairs. It's, it's possible. It's awkward, but it's possible. But again, if it's, if it's something that we can maybe look at, I don't want to eliminate an entire grade level of classrooms for a student, uh, that might need that service. And if we're trying to make, make it so all the buildings could be accessible. So a student that lives in the Williams area wouldn't have to come to view because it's the only accessible building in the district. You know, I'd like our walkable neighborhoods to be accessible for all families, regardless of their accessibility issues. If it's something that we can achieve.
All right. Um, any other comments or questions on the items in the finance report? So I just want to highlight item number 6.03. So this is the Coalition for Equity and Adequacy of School Funding. So this is, this is something that, that kind of segues into what I went, uh, this time last year to the state capitol, uh, to kind of talk to the joint committee about is, is, uh, equity and adequacy in funding, specifically how it relates, um, to, uh, funding vouchers. And, and so what's important to note here for the board is, is that the group that's doing this, this is the same group of people that successfully, um, challenged the constitutionality of the current, um, funding formula four different times. And, and was awarded, um, in their favor four different times by the Ohio Supreme Court. So, so this isn't, you know, just anybody, you know, wanting to do this. This is a group that really knows their business with the constitutionality of this. And, and I think it's worthwhile. Specifically as the funding formula that the cut Patterson bill that was passed through the Ohio House and then just summarily sat on the bench in the Senate to go nowhere. I mean, you know, that would have gone a long way to kind of easing some of this. And, and I think, you know, our legislature colleagues in, in the state capitol, I, I think are a little lost. And, and so I support this and I encourage my fellow board members as we look at this next week to, to vote for this, to support this as well. All right. Any other comments? Questions? All right. We'll move on to, um, since this is a special board meeting, uh, we did have an opportunity for hearing of the public. I have not received any emails from the public participation. And so, uh, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item in our agenda, which is executive session. And so there are a couple of items that we will be entering into executive session with. And so I would like to make a motion that we enter into executive session for, or in accordance with ORC 121.22G1, which is the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official, or the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, official licensee or regulated individual. Also in accordance with ORC 121.22G2, which is the purchase of property for public purposes or for the sale of public property at competitive bidding. And then also for in accordance with ORC 121.22G81, which is the information is directly related to a request for economic development assistance that is to be provided or administered under the statute set forth and revised code. involves the public infrastructure improvements or the extension of utility services that are directly related to an economic development project. Can I get a second, please?
A second.
Any discussion about going into executive session? This is Camp House. Please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Rayber?
Yes.
Mrs. Verica?
Yes.
With that, it is 6:47 and we are now entering executive session.